Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, September 17th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10th, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9 North, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And a quorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Kanter.
Been excused.
Excuse. Mr. Hughes has been excused. Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Roscoe has been excused. Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton? Absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Absent. And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic, for which under God,
Thank you. Mr. Troply, you're going to swear in the professionals, please.
And professionals, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of God.
I do.
I do.
Tonight, we have Ms. Beam, Mr. Conliffe, Mr. ADR, and also Mr. Howard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, regular meeting, August 23rd, 2021. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, Stanton, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
The chairman make a motion to move it.
Motion by Mr. Seiya. Do I have a second?
Second it. Moretti.
Second by Mr. Moretti. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Any correspondence?
Ah, yes. Eileen sent down an email about the Rules Committee meeting.
Yeah.
If you could just get back to her, you could just email her and let her know.
Okay.
And the next zoning board meeting is next Monday night due to Columbus Day.
Okay. Mr. Seiya, I will not be here.
I'm tracking soon.
Okay, sir. I appreciate that. And I just to let you know, in 30 years, my brother's coming up. First time ever up here.
Nice.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that's interesting. So.
Welcome to New Jersey.
He might get a good welcoming. Okay. Okay, resolutions. Case number BA 2112, Walter Miller. Resolution granting bulk variance for construction of a single-family dwelling with septic on an undersized lot. Eligible voters: Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Roscoe, Seiya, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a motion. Move it.
Seiya? Seconded by?
Moretti.
Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution memorialized.
Okay. Before we get into these, Ron?
Yeah.
Really, we've got two use variances, correct?
Well, we have a use variance on Fairfield.
Yeah.
And we have a temporary use permit, which is a recommendation to the council. What, can we bring Dante in? And, you know, let's have a conversation with him to see whether or not he wants to proceed or not. We only have four, so.
Dante's coming in the meeting.
Hey, thanks. Hi, Dante. Can we have your appearance for the record, please?
Dante Alfieri.
And you're representing Fairfield Industrial Park this evening, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So Dante, the chairman and I had spoken as we were bringing you in the meeting. We only have four members tonight.
Okay.
We don't expect anymore.
Will it be appropriate if we provide a testimony and held a vote until the next meeting?
Well, the next meeting is Monday, so I you know, it'll be your call. Will you be getting transcripts or anything?
By Monday, I doubt we'd be able to get them to you.
I don't know what the chairman or the pleasure of the board is on that. I mean, I
I will not be here Monday.
Do you have a quorum for Monday?
I, I won't, probably will not know till Monday.
I don't know.
I don't know until Monday.
I thought we would have a quorum today. Well, we have, we have a
We have a quorum, just not
We don't have the supermajority that you mean.
I figured, I thought we would at least have, you know, at least six members tonight, but, you know. It, you know.
Dante, really, it's
What meeting, what meeting is after the next one? What date is that?
The
We'll have to see, we'll have to ask Eileen what's available.
It's the fourth Monday. That's the next meeting. I don't know what's on the agenda, Matt. Do you know what's on the agenda?
Uh, he can find out in a few minutes. The next meeting after that is October 25th.
Right, it's the fourth Monday, right?
Yes.
I mean, in all likelihood, Dante, we wouldn't be able to have a vote until the fourth Monday, from what I'm hearing, if you know, things are shifted around on this coming Monday and you know, we can't make any representation. So if we can put you on the last meeting of October, we should be able to wrap it up, you know, rather quickly, provided we have at least five members at that point, which I think would be a better shot than trying to proceed tonight and holding the vote.
Well, I definitely don't, okay, okay. Can I just check with my professionals to see if they're available? So you said October 24th?
Yes.
Yes. Wait a minute.
Twenty fifth, yeah. Twenty five.
Yeah, yeah. October 25th would be fine. We have Brookstone on and New Jersey American Water.
Brookstone. Where is Brookstone? Refresh my memory.
Swan come yellowbrook road. Yeah. Yeah, that, that's a big one.
This should not, this application should not take a very long time.
And are we talking about just moving the boat?
Testimony.
I don't think that that's what he was suggesting.
Well, if the board is willing, we would be willing to provide testimony tonight, but it's up, it's up to the board. But if not, then we, I'm just seeing if the 25th works. And if it does, we would request that we be heard before that big, big application.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Troply.
I'm okay with that, too. Why don't we hear the testimony?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't have, Dante, if you want to proceed that way, that's fine. I'd rather not waste the time. Um, I don't expect, do you have all your professionals ready tonight?
All my professionals are ready tonight. I do.
The only thing is that we can't guarantee when the absent members could read the, you know, see the video, but you know, it's with that caveat, why don't we, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem. Dante indicates he's comfortable with doing it. No vote tonight. Um, you're not, you would not be the first case out, by the way. We just wanted to bring you up to discuss this. So I have no, no objection in proceeding tonight.
Okay.
And hold the vote. Okay, Dante?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to switch order a little bit. I, I want to do this temporary use variant, or temporary use permit first, because, you know, I, I think we can move that real fairly quickly. Okay, um, case number BA 2122. Carmine J. Caruso. Temporary use permit. Application of Carmine J. Caruso, Carusco Excavating Company. He, as applicant and owner, seeking temporary use permit to utilize vacant lot as a temporary trailer parking storage staging area for material supplier delivery company. This this use is proposed to occur early November to a short time after Christmas for maximum period of 90 days. There are no proposed improvements to the lot as plans indicate that the trailers will use existing driveway connection from the neighboring property, Lot 1401, also owned by Caruso Excavating, on premises known as Block 233, Lot 2201, 122 Highway 34. I do not see a expiration date. Okay. Is Mr. Caruso in?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dennis Collins. Are you hearing me okay?
Yes, sir.
This evening, I have the pleasure of representing Carmine Caruso, uh, the owner of the property in question located at 122 Route 34. Mr. Caruso also owns the adjoining property, which is, uh, Caruso Excavating and other companies. Uh, with me tonight is, uh, Chip Caruso. Carmine goes by Chip. Um, and I, we also have Brian Perry with me. He is our engineer, but I do not expect him to, I'm, I'm not offering him as a witness. He's only here if there's any questions. If I may begin.
Well, before, before you begin, Mr. Troply, I, I just want, just the clean record here. Uh, I don't feel that there is a conflict, but I, I used to bail hay for, for the Carusos on the vacant property. You know, I don't have a problem with, you know, moving the case. I, I really don't, but it is totally up to my board attorney and you, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Nansen, how, um, how long ago was this?
It's been quite a while.
Do you have a business relationship today recently with Mr. Caruso?
No.
Do you have anything to do with the application that is being presented tonight?
No.
In your opinion, can you decide this case fairly and impartially?
Yes.
Mr. Collins, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, and I certainly don't think this rises anywhere near a level of a conflict.
I agree. Uh, the chairman just wanted it on the record. So, um, Dennis, why don't you let me swear both witnesses in, just in case you need to refer to Mr. Terry? So if both of them, it looks like both are there. I can't quite see them.
Yeah, they're gonna show, show you. I know it.
Okay, they're in view now. A gentleman, would you raise your right hand, please? Take the oath. Swear that the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the true self of God.
I do.
All right, starting with the applicant, Mr. Caruso, your name for the record?
Carmine J. Caruso.
Thank you, and Mr. Terry, please.
Brian J. Perry.
I'm sorry, was that Terry or Perry?
Perry. P E R Y. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, all sworn, Mr. Collins, your witness.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will try to be concise on this temporary use permit. The board members may recall that the property that we, um, that is forms the subject of this application was, uh, known as the Collingswood Motel. Uh, many, many years ago, if you were familiar with that particular property, um, the motel collapsed. Um, the town took the property back by tax foreclosure. Um, and my client, uh, it was, it was a property was an absolute mess. My client, uh, did, uh, work with the town, uh, and purchased the property. At that time, the property was rat-infested. Uh, there was asbestos, friable asbestos blowing in the wind, and there was an active leaking oil tank on the property. So we, uh, took that, um, we purchased it from the town, did all those cleanups. Uh, this occurred probably about 13, 14 years ago. And it merged with Lot 23. This evening is an application for a temporary use permit, uh, to permit, uh, and I want to correct my application. Uh, that was my mistake. Uh, we're seeking a temporary use permit for the storage of empty trailers uh, from October 1st through December 31st. I guess I, I lopped off about a third of the time because lawyers take a third off the top before they present it. So, uh, I'll introduce Mr. Caruso. He'll go through what, uh, what we're asking for, what we had done previously. Um, and Joe, I'm sorry, Mr. Caruso had done this for a little bit. Um, and then Mr. Howard, um, had stopped in and indicated that we were not permitted to do that without an application such as this. Uh, Mr. Howard met with me. He was very kind, and, uh, so we're here now today seeking, uh, that temporary use permit. Uh, finally, I just want to make certain, um, that the board is aware that we, we are aware that this is not a site plan approval. Uh, this is not a, um, an application that will give us any particular rights other than hopefully the temporary use of this. And, uh, hopefully, Mr. Caruso, I'm sorry, Mr. Caruso will be very quick and straightforward regarding what we, what we're doing and what we're seeking to do. Um, so Chip, could you, uh, can you just briefly describe, you know, how this process started, um, for the, the need for these, uh, this temporary storage of empty trailers?
So, um, predominantly, this is deliveries that come to our, our facility. Copper, brass, et cetera, that we get in towards the end of the year. The, uh, we were asked to have a staging area for them after they unload with us because they were working with UPS during the holiday season. So we basically gave them the area of, uh, just, you know, to stage, uh, empty trailers. And they, you know, they bring them in there, let's say, be from beginning of October to the end of October. And then somewhere between mid-November to, um, you know, to mid-December, they take them out like one at a time, you know, they go to, uh, Tittenfalls, um, UPS.
And pursuant to our plans, do these, these trailers are parked generally in the parking area of the, of the former hotels? Is that right?
Yeah, it's where, it's where the building came down and was still in with RCA and the existing parking lot, or, you know, we never, never touched it. It's still in the same parking lot.
And you have no intention of making any, a gravel parking lot or modifying the site in any way? Is that right?
No.
Now, you've done this for a couple of years. Was I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay. Could you tell the board, um, generally, how many trailers are, are there at any peak time?
The maximum is probably pushing 30, maybe. Um, it usually, um, starts off slow, you know, one, two, three, four. Um, and, and that may stay for 10, 15, 20 days. The maximum is going to be 30, and then at the, at that point, they start to deplete. So when you get into mid-December, might be one, two, uh, left, you know, and then that's it.
Now, how many, uh, so, so the, you're not storing any vehicles, though? Is that correct?
Not vehicles, empty trailers.
And, um, what would you say is the ma, the, the average number of trucks that, uh, that might be either brought in or leave the site during this temper, this period of time?
Well, you mean per day?
Yeah, per day.
Well, like I said, some days there, you know, I mean, there could be weeks where nothing is moving. I, if I had to give you an average, I'd say maybe two trailers a day come out.
Now, is this fair to say they're staging these empty trailers?
Yeah.
And could you tell me, you know these truck drivers, correct, as they come to you say? Could you tell me, um, uh, why they're staging it there? What do they do when they pull out the empty trailers?
So when they pull, when they pull out, um, they, they, we, we've actually mandated that they make a right because they're going to the Tittenfalls, uh, UPS. So they immediately make a right, and they're in Howell Township for 2,000 feet, and then they're out of Howell Township. Um, they're going, you know, they're heading down towards 18 to jump off that Hope Road. What, what was the other question?
No, so, and so what, what, what hours of the day do they usually do this? Describe what discussions you have, because there's only, just to be clear, it's only about 30 trailers during the whole time.
Right. So, I, I mean, overall, I'd say between seven in the morning and eight, nine o'clock at night, you know, per se. You know, a parish.
Have you asked these truck, the, the drivers when they're picking up these loads, uh, to leave the property at any particular time?
We actually ask them to leave after hours, like after five o'clock, because there's nobody on, on 34 at all. It's, it's just empty, so we just felt it was easier for them.
Do, uh, do these trucks have any impact on your operations? Meaning, do they significantly increase? Does, is there any traffic issues? Is there any interaction issues that you've experienced?
We have trucks coming in and out all day long, so it, it, there's no effect at all.
Once again, these are always empty storage trailers, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, now you have, the, the, you've blocked off this property, meaning the property where these trailers are, from access to Route 34. Is that correct?
So there, there is existing access from when the motel was there. Then we blocked off with Jersey barriers, so we just continued the Jersey barrier down the right way so that it, that they can't get out that way.
Oh.
Well, and it's not just to get out that way. It's been people who are abandoning cars there and stuff like that, so we blocked them off so nobody could get in there.
Thank you, Mr. Conliffe. And, um, you will access through your first driveway, which is the southernmost driveway. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
And then as you move up that driveway, uh, pretty much parallel, there is an existing curb cut. Is that correct? Do you, can you recall how long that curb cut is there? I mean, was, it wasn't built for this, but
How long has we been there? I don't know, over 30 years.
So you've owned this part of the, the property with your building on there for over 30 years, is that right?
Yes.
And that curb cut just happens to be there?
Yeah, it was there. I mean, I, I remember, I don't remember the change of events for it, but.
And that's the only access that they are permitted, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have too much to say about 30, 30 empty trailers. If, if there are any questions, concerns, I try to address the points in Mr. Conliffe's letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, they tou, uh, touched on most of it. Um, Dennis, I guess the applicant seeking for the maximum two-year for the temporary use permit. So it's from October 1st through December 31st of 2021 and 2022 for two years?
Yeah, please. We expect this type of thing as, you know, Mr. Caruso is also part of the supply chain in his business. We expect this kind of activity um, for the next two years, trying to get packages out during the holiday time.
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, you know, my biggest thing was obviously the site where the Congswood Motel used to exist. Um, and Mr. Mr. Collins put on the record, you know, this isn't any site plan approval. We're not legally, you know, um, legalizing anything that exists on that property. You know, if they want to in the future develop this as some kind of commercial use or a subsumate in their, you know, Caruso excavating, they got to comment for site plan approvals. And this also isn't, you know, validating any like trailer storage on the Caruso property. This is just the temporary use of this adjoining parcel. Um, you know, for, for storage of trailers. Um, from, from a traffic perspective, you know, I think from what the testimony they provided, you know, maximum of two trailers in and out of the site uh, per day at the peak. Obviously, he said there's from October 1st to October 31st, um, is when the trailers are being delivered to the site for, for staging. Um, and then there's a little bit of a lull where there's not a lot of activity. And then, like you said, early December, there's only maybe two trailers on the site. So, so, you know, from a, from a traffic perspective, you know, things occurring after 5:00 PM departures from the site. Um, you know, I, I think this is not, you know, um, you know, we're not having multiple trucks come into and from the, you know, from the site on, on, on a given day. It's, you know, we're taking, putting third trailers on the site, and then over that whatever 60-day period from, uh, November 1st, we're then taking those trailers, you know, periodically from the site. So Dennis, it's not, it's a maximum of 30? Like, is there potential like 30 coming and going, or we're staging 30, and then the 30 are leaving over that period?
Usually, it's they, they bring in a maximum of 30, you know, at some point, there's 30 there, and then they start taking them out little by little.
Okay. There's, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a repetitive overflow. Is that right?
It's very uncommon that they would, uh, drop a trailer and take a trailer. It would only be if, you know, you know, something happens, flat tire or whatever.
And is it true, you usually don't get more than the same trailer twice? It's just parked and then taken out, correct? And I get, we could give you an example, though, Mr. Caruso brought, uh, brought in a photo. On December 11th of last year, how many trailers were still on the site?
Two.
Yeah.
So that, that was it until, until basically Christmas, and then that was gone. And then they were gone.
So, and then Dennis, this is the, uh, I guess, survey that was presented with the application. So generally, this is how the trailers are going to be stored, uh, for that time period. And then I would just say, you know, um, just got to get the fire official's blessing, making sure that, you know, he's got access to the trailers. You know, you indicated nothing's to be stored inside there, so I wouldn't think there's anything, you know, flammable from a fire perspective that's going to cause any issues. But obviously, making sure this access, this crossover is, you know, clear so he can access the site in emergency purposes is key. Um, and then I just want to note for the board record, obviously, it's a temporary use permit that they're seeking. You know, we're just, if the board, uh, rules favorably, we're issuing a recommendation to the governing body who then issues a temporary use permit. Um, if the board does make a recommendation, the governing body does, um, award the temporary use permit, then, uh, after the two-year period, the applicant is entitled to come back for an extension of a maximum of two years. So um, just want to put that on the record. But that's, that's really all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Jennifer, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So what is the dimension from the right-of-way to the first trailer? Like, what's the closest that a trailer would be to 34?
Uh, Brian, Brian, if you don't mind, we'll have Brian answer that, because, uh, you know, he did the plan.
This is a very generous right-of-way from the edge of pavement to where the, the right-of-way line is.
I, I, I understand, but I'm looking at an aerial photograph, and they're very close to the right-of-way. They're very close to the cartway. Um, I also just want to note that if you say 30, that means 30, and I'm looking at a photograph where there's 46. So if you come up, if, if they grant you the temporary use for 30, and there's 35, five are going to have to go right away.
Yeah. Yes, that, that's, we just, I mean, Brian, you just wanted to show them the, the, the configuration, correct?
Right, right. From the, from the curb line to the right-of-way lines, it's between 14 and 28 feet, I think. It slopes. And then, um, you know, the, the, the trailers are, you know, within five feet of the property line on the south side, the right-of-way line. But, you know, you're 20 feet off the edge of the road, um, like I said.
So I just want to make it very clear that that's what's going to happen, because the image is not consistent with that. Like, the, the trailers in the image are like right up against the road. So I want to make sure, and this has it all nice and clean, but the one that I have up on my computer has all the trailers on there right now. Um, so.
Yes, those, those barricades that you have there are on the, are, are on the right-of-way now, right? So, um, the white, the white barricades are on the, the right-of-way line now. Uh, and then the trailers are behind that.
Ms. Bean, do you have a recommendation of a, of a separation from the barriers?
I would say, you know, at least like 15 feet.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Anything for the board?
I just want to put a little context into this, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Um, so apart from the initial complaint that came in that was anonymous and was just referencing the use in the question of, you know, trailer storage on this lot, we haven't gotten any other complaints. It sounds like that the, the applicant, the applicant's kind of been doing this for a little while. It's not a, an area of town that code enforcement goes through too much because it is on its way out. That's the only pretty much way to, to get past it. So um, we haven't had complaints about traffic impacts or, you know, slowing down the highway of any type of issues. So other than that one complaint that was without context, we haven't heard any issues with this, just as a bit of edification for the board.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anything from the board? Okay. Okay, uh, we do not have to open to public, because this is a just a recommendation to council. So at this time, what's the recommendation to the board?
And Mister Chairman, I would just, before um anyone makes a motion, I would ask that they consider the stipulations such as what Jennifer put on the record as part of the recommendation of a separation of at least fifteen feet from the barriers to the nearest trailer. I noted in my um my notes that um maximum thirty trailers. And and if I'm correct, Dennis, the trailers ought to be moved after five o'clock?
Well, I we we asked them to do that. Um, there are so few that go in and out. We asked them to do that just so they get out on thirty-four and get out. Um, but sometimes they do come in, we drop them off in the mornings, so I wouldn't ask for a stipulation, but but it's operated, as Mr. Howard said, it operate really innocuously.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for clearing that up, that's that's fine, and you are asking for two years, right?
Uh, please.
So Chairman, I would just um ask that whomever makes the motion incorporate what I believe those to be the conditions that the town council should um uh review as well as uh whatever approval, if any, that the board makes.
Can I just add one more stipulation, Mister Tropoli? So it's in the resolution that this would be storage of empty trailers. I want, I think that's crucial. Uh, I think Mister Conliffe was concerned about the fire safety if we stored materials. So we would like to stipulate it, particularly if so the fire official sees in writing that was required to be empty.
Okay.
Collins beat me to the punch.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mister Say.
I'd like to make a motion to um to approve this two-year permit with all stipulations as Mister Tropoli had brought forward in accordance with Jennifer's and Charlie's recommendations and as put on the record.
And the and the approval is affirmative for the governing body, correct, Mister Say?
Correct.
Very good.
Uh, the township, the township attorney, review, etc.
Thank you very much.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second about that, ready? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mister Mertens.
Rich, you're not on.
Tell you about that, yes.
Mister Moretti.
Yes.
Mister Sayer.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries, application is approved.
Mister Chairman, uh on behalf of my client, thank you very much. I would also like to know for the record uh that um Ms. Robano, Ms. Cusa reduced my billable hours significantly, because they're so efficient. Everything's pretty much laid out, um but that's good when you get an approval, I really appreciate it and so does my client, thank you.
Good luck.
Have a good, good evening, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, a- at this moment, uh, we're going to take a a five-minute break. I, oh. Okay, Ellie?
Okay, we're taking five-minute breaks and the meeting will return at seven forty-one P M.
Thank you. Okay, next case on the agenda, case number BA twenty twenty uh twenty-one twenty, Donald DeCay Casey. Bulk variance for construction of single-family dwelling with the septic. Application of Donald DeCasey as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approvals for the construction of a new two-story, five-bedroom, single-family dwelling with the septic field indicated on the north side of the principal structure in Locust Avenue front yard on the lot with insufficient lot frontage on Locust Avenue. This application is also proposing the construction of a covered frontside porch with stairs, rear stairs and attached three-car garage with all proposed development taking place in the stem portion of the flag lot on premises known as Block Twenty-Eight, Lot Thirty-Five, One Forty, Locust Avenue. Expiration date, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Mister, Mister DeCasey. I I hope I'm saying that properly.
Yeah, um. The Mister Chairman is muted and the is it, is it Mister DeCase?
Yes.
Hi, that's okay, can you activate your video?
Uh, give me one second.
Sure.
There he is.
Very good, uh Mister Chairman, may I swear in the witness?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, sir, would you raise your right hand? Swear of testament, you're good this evening, be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, South God.
I do.
And state your name for the record, please.
Donald DeCase.
Thank you, sir, do you have any other witnesses this evening?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, the chairman?
Mister DeCase, I apologize for calling you Mister DeCasey, I'm.
That's fine.
Sorry for that, so let the record reflect, it's Mister DeCase. Okay, a- at this time, I'm going to bring Charlie in, Charlie?
Yes, Mister Chair, uh, so um obviously, um applicant is proposing to construct a single-family dwelling on an uh existing undeveloped flag lot. Um, Mister DeCase, um, you didn't assist or work, you know, work directly with an engineer uh for preparation of the septic plot plan for your for your application at all?
The septic I did, I had a, I had it prepared by South Jersey Engineers. They did septic design, that was it.
Okay, now, did you, in the process of putting together, uh working with him on the septic design, did you explore any alternate design um of the septic system to reduce like the mounting height in the front yard or anything like that?
We dis- we discussed it, he said there won't be more than two feet above existing grade based on a soil test. If I remove four feet of existing soil, replace with four feet of septic sand and place the leach field on top of that.
Okay, but did you? Okay, so it's a traditional septic system where you got four foot of separation from the bottom of the disposal field to seasonal high water table. You're replacing some soils in between that, but did, did you look at, there's alternate designs where you can add pretreatment to kind of reduce the grading impact? Was that explored at all by your engineer?
No.
Okay, so.
This was, yeah, I'm sorry, this was the uh the advised system for that lot, just based on the soil, he said this will work, this.
Okay, so Mister Chair, you know, there's, working from a actual constructability perspective is one thing, but there's, you know, impact to adjacent properties, and so I'm just going to share my screen real quick and and um hopefully try to elaborate on my concern. So this is, and I apologize, because I think this is the scan that was submitted as part of the application, so the resolution isn't great. But uh this is the survey of the property from Morgan Engineering, Locust Ave is on the right-hand side here. Um, I believe there's survey, survey, survey data um for the stem portion of the flag lot. There's an unnamed thirty-foot wide private right-of-way along the west side of the of the flag stem, so north is to the right-hand side here. There's a lot in general, grades from Locust Avenue from north to south. Um, you know, so you can kind of see the contours where everything flows back towards the rear of the property. I'm going to, this is the applicant's plot plan, so in this orientation, north would be to the bottom-hand side of the page here. This is that thirty-foot wide private private right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to raise the grade uh three feet where the proposed dwelling, septic system and driveway is going. And you can see, you know, the septic system's at plus or minus eighty-five and eighty-five thirty-three. Um, existing grade in that area is eighty-three, eighty-two, so let's say eighty-two and a half, so they're raising it, you know, two-point-eight feet plus or minus to the center of septic field. And just looking at the contours, you can see they're almost creating a turtleback effect uh on the property. So so my concern from a, from, you know, um a grading perspective is, water that previously kind of flows across the property from north to south now is being raised and pretty much just pushed onto the neighbors, onto this private right-of-way, and what impact that has to the neighbors. Um, so, you know, I I don't know, and my recommendation would be, you know, I I think the applicant might need to go back to their engineer and see if there's any other alternatives to the septic design or whether they looked at any uh alternate locations on the site. You know, the the rear of the site, the lot width starts to open up uh significantly. You know, right now, they're requesting a variance, which is an existing condition for the lot frontage uh and lot width. So two hundred foot's required in the zone, they have one hundred and thirty-three-point-five feet, which is an uh existing condition. But they also need a a front yard setback variance um from this unnamed right-of-way. Um, you know, did you look at Mister DeCass, like possibly, you know, other alternate locations on the site further back? You know, where the lot winds up?
We did, uh, we did, the the grade drops about four feet to the back, so you start getting to a wetter, a seasonally leather- wetter location, so you would have to build that area up higher than it exists, just to get a suitable surface.
Okay, yeah, I I mean, Mister Chair, my my concern would be, you know, just like I said, from a grading perspective, you know, from right here, this is their proposed driveway, you know, you don't have a whole lot of space to put in any kind of swell gratings along the property line. You know, the neighbor, I'll I'll pull up the aerial right here, this is Google Street View imagery. You know, his driveway is along that common property line, so north is to the top here. Where my arrow is, is the subject property. You know, now water that flows across and kind of goes like this is now being pushed onto the neighbor's property. Um, you know, that that would be my concern from 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 the board's perspective. You know, every applicant's got to, you know, show that there's, you know, the positives outweigh the negatives, um, you know.
The relief, if I could just dovetail on what what Charlie's saying is that I think it would be very difficult to justify the variance relief, not so much for the frontage, that is what it is, but um that setback variance, I mean, even the the plot plan that was provided with the application shows that there's like seven hundred some odd feet from the structure to the rear property line. We looked at um G I S data and the wetland is really only in the rear corner of the property. So there appears to be ample room should the the structure be moved back. Then that front yard setback issue goes away, because that, Charlie, can you show where that private ri- right-of-way is? That's a, so I think, we don't know for sure, but I think that that's access to that lot right there, which is landlocked. But as you get farther, right, you get farther into the property.
That's the, that's the only access to that lot?
No, I understand, yes, but once you get beyond that, then you don't have that front yard issue. Um, and you have more room to grade, which would alleviate Charlie's concern. And as the board knows, I'm not a super fan of a mounted septic in the front yard. This would, if it does have to be mounted, it would move it back significantly off the road. So aesthetically, it would, you know, be more in keeping with the intent, so that would be my recommendation as well.
No, I understand what I'm, but what I'm saying is to get that, this back area where you where you're proposing, I put my house, to to be close to the grade that where I have it now is four feet, it's a difference of at least four feet of soil.
But you're raising the grade now three feet, so it's not like you're not raising it, and respectfully, you didn't provide survey information for that area, so.
My seasonal high water table's forty inches, so if you, forty inches is that seasonal high water table back there. So that deems that unsuitable. So to make it suitable, I'd need at least four feet of soil brought in to bring that, even with the front, which then continues your turtleback. It's going to push all that water back to the front.
Yeah, but certainly the lot is wider in that area, so to to put the same footprint of what you're proposing upfront in the rear, you have more than ample space around that to do swell grading, you know, to maintain the existing drainage characteristic. Right now, you're pretty much with your grading right to the to the property line. So, you know, you don't have any room to grade any kind of swell, to maintain, to keep water going to the back of your property. You know, you're pushing that onto the neighbor's property, you're pushing this onto the private right-of-way, you know, that that's the board's concern, you know. I mean, could you put the building in the same footprint and use an alternate design where you do pretreatment, you know, for your septic system? I can tell you right off the bat, you can decrease the septic height by two to two-and-a-half feet, you know, so you're almost putting it at grade in that case. You know, um, I will say for the board's record that to do an alternate design, you know, from a cost perspective, it does cost more money and there's also increased maintenance, you know, burden on on homeowners long-term. You know, Board of Health usually requires a de-restriction on maintenance for those. Um, you know, but as the board knows, you know, we don't take into consideration, you know, um, you know, monetary impact or things like that or cost burden on on land use applications. So I think what what the board's saying is, you know, we want to see a little bit more, um, you know, re- exhausting the resources on like other other, you know, alternate locations and 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 alternate configurations. You know, that's that's not going to show any negative impact to the neighboring properties. That's, that's really what I have, Mister Chair, you know, I I can't say, you know, if if, you know, the board's asking me, does this have any negative impact to the neighboring properties with what's currently proposed? I I can't tell you from a grading impact perspective that uh this isn't going to negatively impact any of the joiners. So, you know, I think that needs to be resolved.
Okay. Um, I want to go back to full screen. Okay, Mister DeCase, uh, do you want to research that a little bit? Um, you know, I, or do you want to move forward with this? And then just, well, I don't, do we have enough board members to even vote this one?
We do, it's a bulk variance, so it's a simple majority.
Majority.
I would strongly encourage you to take the opportunity to take a look at some alternatives from what's being proposed.
You know, Mister Chairman, if uh our professionals um are not in a position to advise on the application as it stands, I think it would behoove the applicant, as Jennifer said, to um essentially adjourn this, take the concerns back to the engineer and, you know, quite frankly, maybe bring the engineer the next time, because I I don't know, and again, I respect Mister DeCase, but I'm hearing Charlie, and after some significant engineering issues, which like it could probably be cleared up uh with professional testimony. But uh from my perspective, I I don't believe that there's enough um on the record tonight for the board to competently act. And remember, if you, if you only have four votes, it's really rolling the dice.
Okay, can you put the, can you put the map back up for a second, please, because I have some questions for the engineer?
Yeah.
He's key, yeah.
Not only that, Mister DeCase, if if you do go back, you can reach out to Charlie and he'll, you know, he's more than willing to.
I I understand that, but he's bringing up a drainage issue issue of two feet of grade over twenty-five foot. Okay, as as a drainage issue, you have two feet of height to drop over twenty-five feet. I don't see that as an issue. If you can't lose two feet of grade over twenty-five feet.
So so can you physically grade a property to make and build what you want? Yes, but you need to be able to demonstrate that you can do it without negatively impacting the neighboring properties. Uh, what I'm telling you is, the existing drainage characteristics of that property in an area where it's in an area of poor soil, poorly draining soils, there's a reason that you have to put a mounted septic system in there, because the seasonal high water table is high. Now you're redirecting that stormwater runoff, whether it comes from the public right-of-way or whether it comes from your proposed development and pushing it onto neighboring properties. You know, you you can't just do that, you have to be able to maintain existing drainage characteristics, you know, and and uh, you know, not cause an issue for your neighbors. So you can't just take a site and raise it three feet and put a wall and then push all the water onto your neighbors. You know, you you gotta, like on a typical application, if you weren't raising this, you know, three feet, you know, and you have room, we'd ask you to put swales in the side yard to push the water to the back of your property, you know, to continue to go where it is. You can't just push this water onto the neighbor and say, oh, well, I'm fine, you know. You know, you got to look at, you know, the potential issues you're you're creating for your neighbors.
Well, and there's there's relief, like this is not an as of right application, if it were, you wouldn't be here. This is a, you're asking for relief, I understand that the frontage is what it is against Locust, but the front yard setback on that right-of-way is a direct relation to your proposal and you have to prove that the positive of the application, which is your house, outweighs the potential negative. And I think what we're hearing is, given the information we have, I'm not certainly in a position, and I and I don't want to speak for Charlie, but I've known him long enough to know that he is very uncomfortable in being in a position. We can't tell the board that the positive is going to outweigh the negative. And I just want to, again, caution you, because if you want to pursue this, which is absolutely right, and the board denies your application, you cannot come back with the same application again. So I would take.
What am I right, what are my rights to appeal it to the state? If you deny, if you deny my application, what are my rights?
You can go to court, you can go to Superior Court and in a couple of years, we'll hear you, I mean.
That's what, that's what I, that's what I need to hear, thank you. That's what, that's what I need to hear. Thank you.
I think you probably should just. Adjourn the application for a month or so, take the opportunity to work with Charlie to come up with a grading design. That he's comfortable with instead of, you know, battling it out. I just feel like. There's a, you know, and, and let me also just state for the record that the board has the presumptive validity of the ordinances when we go to court. So, I just want you to be like, I, I'm not understanding why this is getting so adversarial. We're here to do a job. Our job is to advise the board. We've done that. We've given you a couple of alternatives. We've asked that maybe you take the opportunity to work with us. Come up with a design that we're comfortable with. No one said anything about, you know, what I'm advising is. You can choose to go forward if you so choose. That's up to you, but there are risks associated with doing that.
I just asked what my options were. If you voted on it, denied it. That's all I asked.
I think you heard the options.
And I, and that's all I needed to hear. I needed to know what my options were.
I mean, look, as the board attorney, I agree with everything Jennifer said, and I've been in front of many judges. Over the many twenty-five years almost that I've been doing this. This board is a board that is trying to assist you. Board does not want to redesign your application. On the other hand, the board. Recognizes the difficulties here and the board professionals, I mean, quite frankly, are trying to be helpful. We had an application. Which was quite similar to this not long ago, where an applicant came in in good faith. Uh, with a mounted system and ultimately by working with Jen and working with Charlie, he was able to get approval. On a, on a rather tight lot. And uh, it was all done with um. You know, with additional conversation between our board professionals. You know, look, I'm not one to give you legal advice, sir, but I'll tell you. For members, variants that can be eliminated. And questions that the board engineer has, in my view, doesn't provide for a winning argument. So I would, I would urge you, you consider just adjourning it, speaking to our board engineer, our board planner through your engineer. And, you know, come back, uh, hopefully in a very near future. You know, the last thing this board wants to see is anything that involves litigation. That's certainly the last thing that you want to see as well. My opinion.
Mi- Mr. Troply?
Mr. Vice Chair.
You know, the other, the, the, the thing that really stands out is, you know, the twenty-twenty-one revised stormwater management. That came out of the state, you know, and um. You know, Charlie brings up a good point. We gotta, we gotta adhere to that and uh. And I hear the concerns. So I would hope that the applicant may take a look at those, you know, revised. Statutes and uh, and then work with Charlie to see what he can do to make things happen.
I agree. Mr. De Case, it, it's your ballpark. Uh, you want to adjourn in?
Then you can adjourn it. Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, Eileen, when's our next available date? Or how, how long do you think it will take you to reach out to Charlie or have your engineer, you guys? Do something for alternative or kind of work this out? How, how, how long?
I can reach out, I can reach out to Charlie as early as tomorrow. I'll get ahold of my engineer when this meeting's adjourned.
Okay.
I don't know how fast they'll get back to me. I mean, the problem with anybody anymore is getting ahold of somebody. Everybody's busier than. They anticipate.
Yes. Charlie, do you have a problem with that?
I do not. Uh, as you know, Mr. Chair, I'm always uh, you know, willing to assist applicants and uh, like, like. Like Mr. Troply alluded to, we did have a similar type of application. That applicant did come in, they did some things where they rotated the dwelling, you know, the orientation of the driveway, the septic system, things like that. To soften the grading impact to make the site work. So I think there's more than one way to skin a cat here. Um, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we want to just make sure that there's no negative impact to uh, to the neighboring properties.
Okay. Okay, Eileen, um. What are, what are we looking?
We have November eighth available or November twenty-second. On the eighth, we have Liskowski, uh, carried from nine thirteen, and then we have New Jersey American Water.
Oh, no, in November? I thought that was in October.
That's on November.
Okay.
Uh, the backup is on November eighth, sorry, for New Jersey American Water.
Mr. De Case? Either one of those dates work for you?
Uh, the earlier the better.
Okay. That'd be November eighth, correct?
Yes.
And no further public notice, Mr. Chair?
No, I, I, I read it.
Very good.
Case number BA twenty-one twenty, Donald De Case. Will be carried to November eighth, seven o'clock with no further notice to the public. And we are okay with the expiration date. Okay. Mr. De Case, we'll see you then. Be sure, just get, get ahold of Charlie. He'll work with you there.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get full screen, please? Okay, you want to bring uh, Dante in?
Can you bring Dante? Dante?
Okay. Okay, next, next case before the board, case number BA. I'm sorry, my printer and then also. BA seventeen. Okay, double strike, what is that case number on there?
BA seventeen dash oh-nine A two.
Okay, BA seventeen dash oh-nine A two Fairfield Industrial Park LLC. Use variance, application Fairfield Industrial Park LLC is applicant owner. Seeking use variance approval for a new tenant use. NP Social Service Agency. At an unspecified location with, within the subject property. Daily operation of the new tenant will include. Providing vocational and daily living skill training to adults with development disabilities. On premises known as block one sixty-eight, lot eight and eight point oh-two. Nine twelve, nine eighteen, highway thirty-three. Expiration date, January eighth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. De, Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Board. Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman stated, we are here seeking a use variance tonight um, to include a use. Again, the property address is nine twelve through nineteen, highway thirty-three. Actually, sorry, that's, no, that's correct. Um, the block a lot is block one sixty-eight, lot eight and eight point oh-two. I have three individuals that are going to provide testimony tonight. You want to swear them in one at a time?
No, let, let's swear everybody in together.
Let me make sure everybody's here. So we have Jennifer Rector. Scott Kennel and Christine Cofone.
Dante, it's Justin.
Oh, Justin's, okay, not Christine Cofone, Justin.
Okay, let's see here. So we have Jennifer, Scott and Justin. Okay, um.
Perfect.
Good, okay, whatever um, one, please unmute and raise the right hand, please. And take the oath. You swear the testimony you give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-deprecating.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Starting uh, with Ms. Rector, your name for the record, please?
My name is Jennifer Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Kennel. You're muted, Scott.
Yeah, you gotta unmute.
Now, while we're waiting for that, um, Mr. Osceolo? Name for the record?
Justin Osceolo, that's uh. The phone consulting group.
Thank you. And let's see, Mr. Kennel? He would be responding. Dante, can you text him? Okay.
It looks like he's froze.
Yeah, maybe he's phoning you.
No, he's moving. He's moving.
Well, he's not talking, though. All right, Mr. Kennel, are you there? No, he was.
Got you. We hear you.
You can't hear us?
Uh, he's, Scott, why don't you reboot, reboot?
Well, we could, well, while he straightens that out, Dante, who would be your first witness?
Uh, Jennifer's gonna be my first, first witness.
Can you be in touch with Scott and then we could pick him up if not on video by phone perhaps?
He's gonna re, I just texted him to reboot. He's gonna reboot his computer.
Well, Mr. Chair, I recommend we proceed then.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Dante.
All right, um, Jennifer, you hear me?
Yes.
Can you state your name and spell your name for the record?
Um, my name is Jennifer Rector. It's J E N N I F E R R E C T O R.
And what is your affiliation with the applicant?
I'm the Executive Director of Everest Community Services.
Okay, and uh, can you, we're gonna ask you to provide some details as it relates to um, your business. Uh, the use and what this particular site is going to have on it. Um, so first, if you can just give a background as to relates to um, your business itself, ultimately. Um, what it does, whether it's on this site or adjacent sites.
Sure, um, Everest is a community service provider for adults who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And our mission is to provide services that enable them to live in the community as opposed to in institutions. Um, for the location um, where we would like to become the tenant, we would be providing adult day services. So for people who are over the age of twenty-one and who have um, intellectual and developmental disabilities.
Okay, and you said that the age of the, the individuals that would be um, participating would be over the age of twenty-one?
That's correct.
And um, uh, for this particular site, how many individuals do you expect to be onsite per day?
Um, a maximum of twenty-five individuals would be what we would serve at this location. Um, currently, the program operations actually only serve thirteen individuals. Um, and that would be the clients who um, are receiving services. And then in addition to that, there would be staff.
So, uh, at any given day, how many staff and clients would be onsite?
Um, with our current operations, there's about thirteen individuals that we're providing services to and six staff members.
Okay, and that, that fluctuates, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down? But that's your average number?
Yes.
Dante, if I could just interrupt, if you're, if you're looking for a max of twenty-five um. Individuals, how many staff would you need to service twenty-five individuals?
The max would be about twelve.
Okay.
So with tw- with twenty-five clients, you would need twelve staff members?
Maximum, yes. It could be, it could be less.
And as it relates to the hours of operations, wh- what, are we doing Monday through Friday? What's, what's the timeframe?
Yeah, our operations are Monday through Friday. Um, we're usually onsite between eight and four. Uh, the individuals we provide services to, though, are onsite between nine and two primarily. Um, so we provide transportation to uh, to the site and then transportation back to their homes. Um, so that's generally the hours of operations are eight to four, but people are typically onsite. Uh, and relative to the individuals we serve between nine and two.
And when, uh, so. It, let's just pick a day, say it's Monday. Um, you have clients that get picked up. You are the one, you, you facilitate bringing them onto site and then taking them home?
That's right. That's right.
Are, are, is there times where um, some clients stay half a day?
Not typically. Um, most people are there for the duration of the day.
And now, you, you said that you, you provide transportation. So what type of vehicles do you utilize and do you, do you? Utilize your own vehicles or are they outsourced?
No, we utilize our own vehicles. Our staff drive our vehicles. They're minivans typically. Um, sometimes they're just typical passenger vans that you would see, you know, any family driving. And other times they are the same like that on the outside, but we might make them accessible on inside. So it's essentially minivans.
Minivans. And how many minivans would you have at this site?
Yeah, currently we would have three. Um, but if we did expand to that twenty-five, it would be between three and five vans depending on use.
So currently you have three, but you, you anticipate having up to five?
Correct.
And where would you store these vans?
Our vans are kept on premises um, overnight and on weekends, and they're not in use.
Um, now that you, you mentioned that your clients are there for the majority of the day. Um, how do they receive uh, food? Do they get breakfast, lunch?
No, uh, they, we, the only meal, they have snack and lunch basically onsite. Um, and we don't do any meal preparation. People come like with a packed lunch.
Okay, so there's no prep onsite. You have a microwave or something along those lines?
Yeah, we have a microwave and a refrigerator for, you know, making sure that things are proper temperature.
And with this site operating, handling um, individuals with developmental disabilities. Is this a licensed state site?
Yes, um, we undergo a certification process with the state of New Jersey. First, we have to qualify to be able to provide these services. And then the site undergoes a certification process in order to be able to uh, be eligible to provide these services.
And you have to keep that license current? How often do you have to update it?
Yeah, um, they, you can receive a one, two or three year. We typically receive a three-year certification.
And then to continue with the activities onsite, um. While the clients are there, do they stay within the confines of the site itself?
So then every three years, they'll come out. Sure that we're meeting standards.
Technical issues.
Getting my. Can you? I'm cutting out.
Your, your face is frozen, but I hear you.
Okay, can I keep talking with my frozen face or? I'm on my strongest connection. I don't know what happened. Okay.
So, the individuals, the clients that come on site, um, what type of activities do they do and e- everything is onsite?
Yeah, that's correct. Everything is onsite, um, especially during COVID. We do not leave site if, you know, after the pandemic. There's a potential that in small groups, um, maybe a group of three might leave the site for one activity. Uh, maybe a volunteer experience in the, in the activity or to visit a, a local park or something like that. But primarily, all the activities. These take place within the center on a daily basis.
And you, you mentioned COVID. So what type of protocols do you have in place?
We do not, yeah, we, we have very strict um, policies and procedures. We have screening process for all staff and clients. We do not allow visitors onsite during COVID. Um, we do not allow meetings to take place or anything like that. On site, it is strictly our staff and individuals who are participating in the program.
And um, do you have medical professionals onsite?
We, we don't, we don't have a need for medical professionals. Our organization does have nurses and professional social workers that we can contact in, in the event. Um, but we don't have onsite uh, medical people.
Thank you. Don't believe I have any more questions for you, Jennifer.
Great, thanks.
Charlie?
Yeah, so um, Dante, just to clarify, so there's the floor plan that was provided. There is an area called kitchen. And that's really, it's almost like a break room kind of thing, right? There's just a microwave and then, you know, garbage and stuff like that and a couple of tables. There's no, no food prep. Obviously, uh, Monmouth County Board of Health issued a memo. Applicant will have his engineer certify that the existing septic system for the site can handle the proposed change in, in configuration. No issue with that, Dante?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and then as far as the operations for the site with um, with the traffic perspective. So we said there's three to five vans with up to twenty-five. So five vans max with up to twenty-five clients max. So are they, you know, is each van picking up the max capacity that can fit in the van? And then delivering, you know, clients to the site? Or are they making multiple trips to and from the site, like during the morning delivery?
Do, do you want me to answer? Okay, okay. Um, no, so yes, the vans have multiple people in them. So each van might conduct. A run, um, and they would, you know, drive around to pick up certain people. a run and they would, you know, drive around to pick up certain people in the county to be able to get to program. I'm so sorry, now how about now?
We got you.
Okay, so you're correct, we, we would, we would utilize the vans to drive from home to home to be able to pick people up. There are individuals who live with Everest, meaning we also operate group homes and those individuals get driven to us in minivans that do not stay with us during the day.
All right, so generally speaking, you know, if it's a minivan, you might fit four or five people in there. So, you know, you're getting maybe one van going out once or twice. It's not like, you know, a van picking up one person, then go and pick up another person and then another person.
Yeah, and it's, it, we call them van runs and they only go out once, so they go out once in the morning and then once in the afternoon.
So the traffic is very limited.
And then, and then there's, and like you said, everyone's at the site between nine AM to two PM. And then there's no, we've seen other applications where there's been like off-site vocational training and things like that. There's, there's none of that, everything they stay to the site and then leave at two PM?
For the most part, yes, especially during COVID.
And then as far as everything's inside the building, there's not gonna be any outdoor, like, like, you know, barbecue area, like picnic tables for them to sit outside and things like that?
No, and if that, you know, we would have to obviously have permission, but no, we don't have that.
Yeah, I think that's just important for the board's consideration, because we have had, you know, obviously this is an industrial park. There are like warehousing and, you know, truck traffic that come in through and out there. We had a, like a Ninja Warrior Academy coming a couple of years ago and that was one of the big items of concern, you know, access and safety and things like that. For this, so Dante, I'm just gonna share my screen real quick just to clarify it for the board. And correct me if any of this is, is wrong, so this is building seven, right Dante?
Yes.
And the tenant space is approximately, what, forty-three hundred square feet at the south, I guess east corner of that building?
Yes.
So all the operations, access, you're utilizing parking in the immediate vicinity of that tenant space. So it's not people parking throughout the site and walking multiple, you know, long distances to get to the unit space. It's all you have localized parking right in the immediate vicinity.
That's correct.
All right, my, my only comment would just be if there are drop-off, you know, with, by, by not vans through the, through the service or through the company, but outside, maybe it would behoove the applicant to dedicate like a certain space with signage as drop-off area or something like that. So like we said, you know, we're not dropping people off in a drive aisle or they're not, you know, having to walk far distances to get to the site. You know, as this is an industrial park, but that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, from, from your perspective right now.
We have no objection to do, to provide for that.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Different Jennifer.
I don't have any questions, I, you know, I, I think that the, the testimony kind of answered all the questions that I had about the operations. So I will wait for the plain testimony.
Yeah, board members, do you all have any questions of Ms. Rektor?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and maybe I didn't hear this, but where do the employees park? Based on that site that Charlie showed us?
I think Mr. Kettle is gonna testify to that.
Okay.
Here, Mr. Martin.
Okay, no questions then.
Okay. Mr. Moretti?
I was only, I was only wondering about the vans, they're gonna be parking overnight, is that a McAdam?
Yeah.
Parking lot, are we worried about leaks, Charlie? And the vehicles?
No, this, this, this is a built-out site and it's been fully built out for a, a long time. And like I said, it's all paved parking area, so I, I don't think that's a current concern.
That's my only thing.
Okay, Mr. Salem? You did, okay. Okay, Mr. Fury?
Now I'm gonna call Scott Kettle, I hope he can hear me.
Yes, I can.
We need to.
He was not sworn in, so we should swear him in.
Mr. Troply?
You start the testimony, you get this evening, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, have a God.
I do. Scott Kettle, K E N N E L with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquon.
And can you give the benefit of your credentials, please?
Yes, I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, a traffic and transportation consulting firm. I have over thirty-five years of traffic and transportation planning experience. Having testified on over probably two thousand applications in over a hundred municipalities many times before this board as well as the House Planning Board. And I've also been qualified by the New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Scott, take it away.
All right, well, you heard the testimony by, by Jennifer. And based on my research and discussions with Jennifer, I considered issues very similar to general office. For example, there will be twelve employees and if we consider each employee has their own vehicle onsite. And then we have the five minivans, that's seventeen vehicles. Using industry standards of four spaces per one thousand square feet, that equals seventeen parking spaces. As was testified, there'll be seventeen vehicles generated by this at the max when they have twenty-five clients and if they have five minivans. On, on a traffic generation basis, it's my opinion, it's very consistent with an office use as well. The parking area that Charlie had called out that sits between the building where the Everest will occupy and then the next building to the, to the west, which is building eight, that parking area has approximately seventy-five parking spaces and generally serves both buildings. I've seen employees walk out of building eight and park in that parking area. And during the observations I made over the last two weeks between either mid-morning or mid-afternoon, there's been a total of anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-six vehicles parked, which means there's approximately forty available spaces. I also looked into in, in talking with the landlord, there is approximately, there'll be another, say, eight thousand square feet of vacant space that still isn't occupied. But even taking consideration of the vacant space being occupied by office-type users, it's my opinion there's adequate parking. And I think it's also important to note, building eight, which is on the top of the screen, to the, to the right side, there's approximately thirty-three parking spaces. During my observations, I never saw one vehicle parked in those parking spaces. So there's, you know, in excess of a hundred spaces in the immediate vicinity of building eight and building seven. So with the proposed use, it's my opinion there's more than adequate parking to accommodate the proposed use as well as the existing uses within the park. So I mean, for all intents and purposes, that's, that's my testimony that, you know, based on my observations, based on the statement of operations, on the type of use, it's my opinion that the, this use will not have a negative impact on the operations or parking of Fairfield Business Park.
So, Mr. Chair, you know, I really don't have any questions for Mr. Kettle, I'm just gonna add some additional insight. I did have some questions in my original letter because there wasn't really a, a building or tenant or, or unit identified in the original application. Mr. Alfury's office did submit additional documents to the board indicating what the existing uses were in that tenant space and the proposed use, obviously. It, it looks like from what I can see, the tenant space consisted primarily of two different office tenants. So, you know, one per three hundred, you know, for forty-three hundred square feet, you're looking at fifteen spaces. For the applicant's proposed use, you know, there isn't really a specific requirement for vocational skills or, or, you know, skills training or things of that nature in the ordinance. You know, but when we look at it as something like secondary or higher education and then office space based off of the floor plan provided, you know, I, I get a demand of, you know, right around fifteen spaces. So from a parking perspective, it's, it's almost a one-for-one swap. And then obviously you heard Mr. Kettle's testimony regarding, you know, seventy-five spaces in the immediate proximity. And, and based on his estimates, I think, Scott, what did you say, a maximum of thirty-five you've seen parked there during peak demand or something like that?
Correct, in the middle of the day.
Yeah, so, and then as far as accessability, I just wanna point out for the board's perspective, there is a sidewalk and a handicap space in the immediate vicinity of the building and the entrance there. So I, I, I take no exception to any Mr. Kettle's testimony.
And I, I think for the board's benefit, as you're aware, I've been involved in a lot of, a number of other applications over the last four years on this business park. And when I first testified in twenty-seventeen, there was only about forty to fifty percent of this, of the park leased, it's approximately eighty-seven percent leased today. So, I mean, this, and there's always available parking throughout the park and never mind, as well as in the vicinity of these two buildings. So again, that's why I feel confident that this use will not have a negative impact.
Mr. Kettle, I, I have one question, up by the, where the handicap spaces, you see, you see the hatched area?
Yes.
Okay, you see the white card to the left side there?
Yes.
Okay, is that, would it be possible to make that space a loading and unloading to where they could drop off, the van could pull in there, drop off? And then go park?
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason why that can't happen. I mean, have the room, the tenant, that this, this proposed user will occupy that portion of the building. So they'll be the primary users on that end of the parking area, so I, I don't see any reason why we can't provide that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would say the, the easiest thing would just to put a sign there, you know, indicating, you know, designated drop-off area, something to that effect. And then, you know, they've got a straight aisle right where they can unload and, and get right into the building. That way they're not parking back here, they're not dropping off in the drive aisle, you know, try to minimize the distance to the, to the, to the building. I think is, is a benefit for everyone.
You know, overnight part, you know, they could park a van there overnight, you know?
Yeah, and I, I think the vans can be on the, the west side of the, the vans overnight can be stored on the, the west side of that parking field.
Right, I would, I would suggest, you know, using either one or maybe even two of those spaces there, non-parking spaces unless it's at night. And then that way they could just pull the van in, drop people off, and then park the van over to the side.
Right, and as Charlie mentioned, we can, they can add a sign there too in front of those spaces. So that any, the other tenants know that those spaces are designated for this proposed use.
Jennifer?
Nothing for me.
Okay, board members?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I think that's an excellent idea for safety issues as well. By adding that parking spot for unloading.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, Mr. Murray, Paul?
And is this an industrial park falling under Title Thirty-nine? Where, you know, we could enforce, you know, handicap parking, et cetera?
I think that was, that was conceded to when the business park was originally improved. So I think that was for the park in its entirety and these are just tenants.
Right, so, so they are covered, in other words, by that, by that statute, good. You know, if they designate the parking spot for loading and unloading and there's a signs as same and, you know, as long as the, the tenant's not gonna have any issues with anybody else, we're good.
Hey, Mr. Alfury?
And least, last but not least, we have Justin Osilio.
Good evening.
He was already sworn in, so Justin, if you, if you please start with your testimony.
Can we get your credentials?
I'm sorry, I forgot that.
What competency are you?
A professional planner.
Okay, good, that's what, what I wanted to know, and your credentials, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr., yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a master's degree in planning from Rutgers University. I've been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and seven. I've been active in this field for approximately seventeen years. Believe I appeared in front of the township zoning board on one occasion in the past. I've appeared in front of the planning board on multiple occasions. I've appeared in, in, in eighteen counties in the state of New Jersey, approximately a hundred fifty municipalities. Just, you know, generally speaking, my, my planning experience ranges from redevelopment to master planning to planned review, representing public boards in the past. Those are my qualifications.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Alfury?
Thank you, Justin, if you can continue with your testimony.
Yes, absolutely, so as the board is aware, we do require the use variance for this application, it's inherently beneficial. In my opinion, the, the courts have held, or the MOUL states that this type of use is a use which is, is considered of value to the community because it, it serves a public good, promotes the, the general welfare. Some other uses that the MOUL has listed as, you know, this type of use that's, that's inherently beneficial is a hospital, a school, a child, it's a childcare center, group home, et cetera. Certainly, based on the testimony of the applicant slash operator, this is a use that, that that fundamentally serves the public good based on the services that, that they provide to the community at large. Given that, that's my professional opinion, that this use, you know, falls under that criteria, I believe that the, the testimony is captured under the Sika case. That's a case out of, out of Wall Township, that was decided by the court, by the Supreme Court in the state of New Jersey in nineteen ninety-two. And it prescribes a, a test of four prongs. The first prong is the, 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 the public interest that's served by this use. You heard testimony by the applicant, certainly that, you know, th- this is a use that, that serves the public interest by providing services and, and training for adults with the disabilities. Certainly, the, you know, this is a use that, that, that will advance general welfare. The second prong is that if there are any negative impacts that wouldn't sue from the grant of a variance, I believe that there are none, I think that the, the tenant's space, you know, can be adapted, you know, for this use. The operator has stated that there are, there are operations that will be in place to accommodate the facility, to accommodate, you know, the safe functioning with COVID, the, the handling of, of food at, at, at proper temperatures, et cetera. So, negative impacts, I don't see much in the way of any. The board also, the third prong of the proof is whether any negative impacts can be reduced by some conditions on the use. Even though I, I don't see this a- as a use that's providing for any negative impacts, the applicant has agreed to, to stipulate that there will be a parking spot for, for loading of, of people and the, the unloading of, of people as well. So certainly that's a reasonable condition that, that can be applied to this use. The, the, the last and final prong is the weighing of the positive and the negative criteria. You know, certainly that's the positive criteria. As the negative criteria, as the board is, is well aware, the first prong is a showing if whether the use will present a substantial detriment to the public good. It's, it's been my testimony already that I don't, I, you know, don't see any detriments to this use. Certainly don't see any, any detriments that would rise to the level of being substantial. People can park right near the facility, no, no outdoor activities, a, a, you know, an area for, for safe drop-off. As you previously heard, this is a, a built-out site, there's the existing paved parking area. Mr. Kettle provided testimony that the, the traffic generation is minimal and consistent with the permitted use, which is an office use. You know, so certainly with all of those said, no substantial detriment. And lastly, the final prong is, is whether the use, the, as proposed, will have a, a negative impact on the purpose of the zone plan and, and the zoning ordinance. Your zoning ordinance has, has multiple purposes. One of those purposes is for the, the welfare. Um, one of those purposes is for the, uh, the, the welfare of the community. I believe, of course, this is a use that, that serves as general welfare. Um, no substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance, certainly no substantial detriment to the, the underlying zone, uh, SED. Um, this is a use that promotes it, and as, as Mr. Kennel had previously said, this is, this is similar. Uh, from the traffic generation standpoint, as an office use, so I believe that this is a use that. Uh, not only, um, fits the, uh, the, the existing industrial park. Um, also serves the needs of the community, um, and, and certainly, um, you know, would result in a tenant filling the, uh, the space. Um, you know, which, which is also something that's important to the overall functioning. Uh, and of, of the, uh, the, the office park. Um, so in conclusion, certainly, uh, the, uh, the, this use serves general welfare and no negative impacts.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I, I don't disagree with the testimony, I do, I do agree that the use is inherently beneficial, and I do think that. The site is, you know, regardless of whether or not you go down that prong, I do think the site is particularly suited for this type of use. I think the applicant has provided operational testimony to show how it will, um, work in this environment. It, with no issues, Mr. Kennel provided testimony that the site can accommodate. The vehicles and, and the parking, and I agree, there's no negative impact associated with, uh, implementation of this development plan. I do have one question, um, and I'm not sure if this is for you, Dante, or it's for you, Justin, is, are you proposing any signage with the application?
Pass it over to Dante.
I do not believe so, Jennifer, is there signage?
Uh, it, not typically, I mean, we might put something on a window, you know, that. It's like a, a see-through thing on the window that just lets people know that we are business, but if you mean signage on the road to.
So Dante, there's two existing freestanding signs, uh, on the two entrances from Route Thirty-three, if the applicant has any intent to. Put a sign placard there, just, you know, put on the record, that way, you know, they don't have to come back to the board to put a sign up.
Okay.
So if, uh, if, if the, if, uh, my client intends to install a sign, it would just be on those pre-existing areas?
Well, even if you want to put it on, on the building, I would just suggest that you put, put testimony on the record now, because this is a use variance, so if you need to put signage. Later, you're gonna have to go through this rigmarole again. So I would say, you know, I understand that you don't maybe have a, a finalized program for signage. But that if you were to put, um, a site identification sign, it would be in the existing structure that identifies the business park, correct?
Correct.
And that any signage that would be in this tenant's space would be conforming?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody, my board members, do y'all have any questions of Mr. Corello?
I'm good.
Mr. Martin?
I'm good.
I'm good. Moretti?
Paul, you good?
I'm good, as long as Jen's good.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Afiri, uh, does that conclude your testimony?
It does.
Okay, at, at this point in time, I'm gonna. Request a motion from the board to open to public?
The chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to open to public?
Motion by Mr. Sayah, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eileen, at this time, we'll open to public for public comments and questions of the witness and the applicant?
Okay.
There's nobody from the public as yet.
Okay, anybody from the public wishes to ask a question or make a comment in, in regards to this application, to this application and from this application? Applicant, can you please raise your hand?
So we don't have anyone in the audience?
Okay, just making sure. You good, Eileen?
Good, there's still nobody.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close public?
I make a motion to close public.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Sayah, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed, okay, Mr. Afiri?
Uh, so, as the board alluded to earlier, we only have four members tonight, so we are going to request that the board. Uh, reserve the vote until October twenty-fifth.
That's fine.
And Mr. Troply, that will be just for vote?
That's correct.
No more testimony or will not reopen the public?
Well, correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just want to put one quick thing on the record, um, I was sharing my screen, I was sharing the most current Google Earth aerial imagery from April fifth, twenty twenty-one. Um, I reviewed the revised survey or a survey provided by Mr. Afiri's property. Uh, sorry, from his office and can confirm, uh, the aerial accurately reflects the survey, I just want to get it on the record, so that way. You know, uh, everything's, uh, good from a procedural perspective.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Afiri, good luck, and we'll see you on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Eileen, do we have any other further business of the board for tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay, guys, I appreciate everybody coming in and being here, and hopefully, we got something done.
Like we did.
Yep, okay, uh, because there's no other business of the board, I want to. Leave y'all in the hands of Mr. Sayah at the next meeting. And he'll do a great job, he always does. And I, you know, I'm gonna enjoy my birthday.
Happy birthday, Wendell.
Happy birthday, Wendell.
Have a great birthday.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and you guys have a good week, and I, I'll see you the following meeting.
Amen.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Take your motion.
Have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Sayah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Take care.
Yes, sir, thank you.